State your name and address. Please limit your comments to three minutes. And seeing as we have a large audience, I'm just gonna ask everybody, let's refrain from over enthusiasm. Let's let people speak. The more we let people speak, the more they get the opportunity. So we can save applause to the end. At this point, we're open for public comments. Uh, please wait for the second opportunity. Okay, we got it. Uh, okay, so if there are no public comments, I'll leave. You can let that pass you.
My name is Susan here, this is Lee Chase, and my addresses are all on file over in the city. So I'll just say that. I'm talking tonight, and good evening to you. Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. Talking tonight about Title 25, I believe it is. Couple of quick questions I have. Couple of words that I don't know the definition of, and I don't know that you all have consensus on those words either. What is frequent smoke? Is that one smoke a day for 10 hours? Is that one smoke a day for a week? I don't know. But you guys are the ones that have to enforce it. Going on a little bit further, there is, and I applaud the three or four of you that tried to work on definitions. Um, I'm glad that you did. Uh, but I have a question about the word... Um, infrequent pickup and delivery. Once again, how are you going to determine infrequent pickup and delivery of a warehouse? Is that one truck a day? Is that one truck only making one pickup, but you can have a thousand trucks come or a hundred trucks come? And that's infrequent because that's, trucks only there once? So I guess I have some question about that. And lastly, I think there's a section misplaced because I find it really interesting in the next use... Just a second, I'll find it. In the next use village. I would assume that that's only talking about the next use village, that section. But it talks about, "The proposal shall include provisions for establishing a truck staging area to prevent truck parking and idling on streets and within residential neighborhoods." I assume that only is for the next use area, the next use village. If that's the case, I bet you there's some people on Edmonds Village, there's some people in the historic village. There might even be people in Hoffman Hill that don't want trucks sitting idling while they're waiting to go into the next use village. So I would recommend personally that that paragraph from that section be either put in Title IX Public Peace and Safety or Title 16 Traffic, I'm not sure. Which I think it probably belongs in Title IX. Right along with Disordered People. But that's just my thought. And I guess the last recommendation is, if you're going to put it throughout all the city, then it really needs to go out the same path and pass the next use village. And if it isn't, the only question I have is, how come their special man not even here to talk to you? There, because there isn't a resident.
Lisa Merkel, you have my address on file.
Please speak into the microphone.
Okay, sorry. Lisa Merkel, you've got my address on file as well. Not first timer. Good evening. I wanted to begin by reading directly from Chapter 25.05, General Provisions of the DMC. Rules of Interpretation, Number Three. When a provision of this title conflicts with another provision in this title, the more restrictive provision shall apply. Number Six. In the case of any ambiguity or differences of meaning or inconsistencies between the text and any illustrations or other graphics, the text throughout this title and the Zone Classification Use Table in the appendix to this title shall control. Number Seven. The words "shall" and "should" are mandatory. I understand there is still confusion among city staff about their wording except for freestanding/distribution facilities in the current BTP code. Since there's ambiguity, we must legally follow the DMC Rules of Interpretation and also use the Zone Classification Use Tables in the appendix for interpretation. The appendix clearly states warehousing is only allowed as an accessory use in the BTP and must be attached. Additionally, under Distribution in the appendix, it also states it's an accessory use for the BTP. The appendix is not just a chart or a non-legally enforceable document as previously stated by city staff. Again, according to the DMC Rules of Interpretation, the appendix is a legal document in the DMC and must be upheld. It could not be more clear. Freestanding warehouses are not currently allowed in the BTP. Also, as a separate topic, please do not confuse the building structure of a warehouse with the actual use of a warehouse or warehousing. Industry and professional standards definitions confirm that the use of a warehouse includes heavy trucks and distribution. For example, the Amazon facility is coded as a warehouse by the Federal Department of Labor. Again, you cannot confuse the structure of a large rectangular building known as a warehouse with the land use of warehouse or warehousing. The Design and Performance Standards, AKA what a building looks like, are detailed in different sections of the DMC and are completely separate from the permitted land uses. For example, vol and offer and gymnastics are located in a building structure known as a warehouse. The fact that they are located inside a large rectangular building does not mean that they are engaged in the use of warehousing. If either businesses wanted to open a new facility in the OFL property, they would be allowed to under the current BTP code. They would just have to follow the Design for and Performance Standards in the code and other city regulations with regard to the physical appearance of their proposed building. Thank you.
Uh, Don Dresser, 1437 O'Leary Ford. Primarily, uh, I'm talking to the council members tonight. And, uh, because I'm one of the many people who are both here and live in the community the way we're as a city proceeding with these developers. And, uh, at first, I thought, well, we have a new mayor, we got a new care of the planning department, et cetera. And, uh, maybe we didn't know the history and we're fighting the same old battles over and over again. And, uh, so the Old Ford Lake, even the rewrite, isn't even good. If you look at, uh, the, uh, the historic part of the Intel, you know, there was office buildings and now they're looking at tearing them down. But, uh, warehouses in there. You look at the Arco situation. You look at the, uh, uh, removal of the mineral overlay of the Mission Site property. And, uh, you look at that and who gets the benefit? And what the benefit is? Do you really know? I know. There's still a major impediment that would stop any development of that property. And, uh, so luckily, we have that in place. But we go about these things to try to generate money. I guess is the bottom line. And, uh, you're not looking at the quality of life. That's why these people move here and live here. Whether it's here as retired people or they're here as, uh, working at JBLM for the Air Force or for the Army. They're only here for three, four years and they're gone. But they like the community, they like the, uh, the trees and the water does come in the creek. You signed on to repair and eventually have a valid creek again where you would have wild salmon and sea run cockroaches running up it. And, uh, we're just kind of throwing this stuff away. But, and there is money after the purchase of it. Historically, we've fallen down on stating our historic first. First school in Pewter Sound, first church in Pewter Sound. The Buffalo Soldiers and their encampment here for three or four months.
Thank you, Mr. Dresser.
Thank you.
I have a letter from about 50 citizens. Would you like all their names?
You can turn it in to me.
As residents and friends of historic village, we sign this petition to ask city walls to preserve our historic standards and our unique character. DuPont's comp plan suggests these goals. One, every attempt you make to preserve the character of the original company talent of the state road. Two, commercial and other development uses near the interests of historic village should also reflect DuPont's historic character and unique charm. We love historic village, we believe it is worth preserving. We cannot remain silent at the threats. We strongly oppose these two changes that are inappropriate and unwanted. One, the community overlay you consider for Petri's Landing also changes city code. It will allow seven-story apartments with 300 residents in the historic village. We support Petri's Landing 100%, but we oppose these changes in the village. None of us asked for this change. Please remove historic village from this overlay. Two, the proposed 16 pump Arco station is a violation of our comp plan. It is not small and it doesn't fit in our historic district. The developer filed an incorrect wetland report which threatens the historic Belle Marsh and our offer. City councils, please join us in speaking up. A gas station twice aside the cost of does not belong at the historic entrance of the city of DuPont. Thank you for hearing our concerns. We trust you city council to ask questions and to delay passage of the community overlay. Please remove the language that forces this change on the historic village and other parts of the city. Please help us stop an illegal supersized gas station from becoming a crime magnet and eyesore in one of the state's most precious cultural and historical areas.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Can we get the name and address, please, to the right? We have to discuss this.
Yes, Professor.
That's okay. Justin, we need you to state your name and address at the microphone.
Justin Fester, 504 DuPont Avenue.
Justin Fester, 504 DuPont Avenue. Thank you.
Henry Ontario, 406 Parksville Avenue. And while we read, we're in very close contact with the owners who would agree with that letter. And I'd like the opportunity to sign that.
If you signed up to speak tonight, now is the time. Because if you speak in the second public session, all the discussion is already over. So please come up and if your name's on that list, come up and speak at this point. It's very important. My name's Maria Godenas, 507 New Years. What is going on here? What's driving this agenda? Where are we heading? And what is the roadmap? Do we like the direction where the meeting led into? It seems here, it seems looking around here that despite DuPont being a representative democracy with representational governance, somehow, we have missed the mark. Can you see this? Project after project is unwanted. Project after project violates our comp plan, violates our small-town city character, violates our clean air, our property values, our safety, our rockability. Decisions are being made, policies are promoted, a future vision is being mapped out that is breaking the hearts of your constituents. Word games about definitions are just a smokescreen. We all know that any warehouse that has a distribution element that stores goods but never distributes them for profit, is such a thing real? Kind of sounds funny when you put it that way. But let's stop playing games. 99% of warehouses distribute products. So 99% of warehouses are warehouse distribution facilities. Okay, unless it's Indiana Jones putting away the Ark of the Covenant for eternity. These are the same thing in the eyes of the State Department of Revenue. It's the same thing in the eyes of the State Department of Labor. And for anyone not playing word games, they were forbidden from Old Ford Lake unless they were accessory use. We know this because the legal definition in the table tells us that. So how do we fix all this drama, these errors, these misinterpretations, this strange messaging? City Council, I ask you, is this how you want to do business for the next two years? This constant flack, questionable language, comp plan violations, mega-sized developments in a small town? Maybe we need to ask the question, who does this city work for? Planning Director, City Administrator, Gordon, City Attorney? Who do you work for? Mayor, City Council, Commissions? Who do you work for? And citizens? Who do you work for? For the city, for the people and neighborhoods of the city, our families, our children, our future. You tell me this is healthy governance?
Thank you, Mrs. Dennis.
What does healthy leadership even look like? Not like this.
Pam Fisher, 1738 McLeod Circle. First, I'd like to say thank you as an Air Force veteran and wife of a retired soldier. Thank you for the proper lack of placement. So the letter that I'm reading today is an email from Gary Dancliffson dated May 11th last year, before a lot of this discussion among council members. Mayor Ted, Mayor Ted and Jeff, thank you for yesterday and hosting us. And then Miss Glories, please let me know how the meeting goes today. I believe Copper Leaf is at a critical juncture with the city. We are down to two key issues, with those being how to get permanent access to the property and the industrial uses allowed into the center portion of the property and potentially throughout the entire park. I've attached three One Patriot reports on the market that I hope will tell the story for both you and the council. These are the facts that Copper Leaf is confronted with, is confronted as we underwrite the property. The market reports are from an independent source called Coke Star. And you can run different queries, which I did. I left out truck terminals from this market analysis. First report, entire Pierce County industrial market highlights. Market size, 68.5 million square feet. Vacancy rate, 4.8%. Five-year, 12-month, 12-month absorption, 1.838 million square feet per year. Second report, warehouse distribution marketplace only. Pierce County highlights, 55 million square feet. Vacancy rate, 5.9%. Five-year to 12-month absorption, 1.6 million square feet per year. Third report, remaining industrial markets subtracting out the warehouse trash distribution. This is the marketplace you want for Northwest Landing and asking Copper Leaf to stabilize the property and invest millions of dollars, if not Copper Leaf, the next developer. Market size, 7.8 million square feet. Vacancy, 28.8%. Five-year absorption, 73,589. I personally don't think it makes any sense for Copper Leaf or any other developer to make an investment if you are limited to the market dynamics of option three. Also, I don't think it's in the city's best interest either. It will take forever to absorb as there is already high vacancy that will have to absorb the 2.2 million square feet available. We have to be able to compete in the Pierce County marketplace for the entire spectrum of industrial users and not eliminate warehouse distribution. If not, then it makes no sense to be relegated to competing for option three. Industrial requirements, we operate or limited to market demand for office, retail, residential. Not allowed.
Thank you. You're at the end of your three minutes.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Anna Burnett, and I am 10 years old. I live in skew DuPont at 3059 Shannon Street. DuPont, Washington is my city and I am asking the city council to not result the Old Ford Lake area to allow freestanding warehouses in that area. Please also do not change the zone from commercial to industrial. Please consider this petition and the other petitions of the kids at DuPont when you make your votes today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jan Deacon, also known as Mr. Ming Chu. Uh, if you've received a letter from Ming Chu, she's my wife. She's in Malaysia today and says that she wishes she could meet her. But she insisted that I come and speak on the Alpha-Pope. So I guess I get six minutes instead of three.
But try that.
I will, I will simply ask that the council read the letter. I hope you have, that she submitted to each of you individually and that it be entered into the record rather than be reading it here. And so I will go on to my comments. My comments are that when I was here last time, I spoke about trust. And I still believe that that is a central issue that we're dealing with here. I actually have found myself believing that I actually trust you more than I thought I did, which may seem unusual, but, um, I've listened and I've watched and I've been kind of quiet. I don't know if anybody noticed. But, um, I've actually come to believe that you are actually trying to do the best that you believe is invest into the interests of the city. I happen to disagree with some of the things that I think you're about to do. Um, but I also believe that it's important that in this democracy that we collect people, that they listen, that you listen to us and we listen to you. And just like the old books, the good book says, iron does sharpen iron. We will get better at this. Okay? My concern right now is that we actually can figure out how to handle dog poo by figuring out, do we want to hear or not? What's the signage that we need so that it flows in the right place at the right time? People know that they can't come in? I'm not sure we have yet the plan. It is the plan that we need in terms of warehousing and the flow of traffic, the truck traffic, the risk regarding kids, the risk to property values. And I don't see the rush. Uh, time does. Actually, one thing I know is that property values around here tend to go up, things to go up in value. So if we take longer to figure out how to do this right and how to get the trucks in the right place, the houses in the right place, the kids in their safe place, um, I haven't seen a plan that I'm comfortable with yet as a citizen. As a father and grandfather, I really have a concern about that. So I hope, I pray that you will continue to listen and find wisdom in figuring out how to do this in a better way than what seems to be what's on the left.
Ross Thiessen, 1484 Richmond Avenue. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I've been a real estate appraiser for 28 years. And included in every report is an aerial photograph of the subject and anything surrounding within about two miles. And the reason for that is because the lender wants to know if anything will affect the value of that house, whether it be a busy road, railroad tracks, commercial buildings. In every case, if that house can either see or is in close proximity to that, those buildings or that external obsolescence, is what they call it, it affects its value and it will lower its value. The problem is when those homes that are affected by that sell, they become comparables for anything in DuPont. So for instance, Sinclair has homes ranging from 2,000 to 3,000 square feet, which is basically the size of 90% of the homes in DuPont. So when those sell, it will lower the value of anything similar to that house, for sure.
Guy Floddy, 3070 Bryant Street. In the recent water sewer bill, the mayor included his course logs in which he stated there have been much conversations about the proposed changes to our laws. He goes on about having to let the property owners do with their property just like we citizens have the right to do with our own property. So let me ask this rhetorical question. Can I open a bar in my house? Can I sell marijuana out of my house? Can I turn my house into a marijuana store? I can't turn my house into a business because of zoning codes. This is also true of the property the owners or the developers of this land. They require a change in our current zoning codes to put up warehouses. Even they ended to this. I'm quoting from an email dated 5/5/17, sent from the developer to the city administrator in my room. The key thing for Copper Leaf will get, will be getting the council approval to do warehouse distribution buildings in the center of the property. I understand the council's resistance to allow this because of Amazon, et cetera. However, this is the most vibrant sector of our market besides residential. If we can't build warehouse distribution and cater to this market segment, then Copper Leaf will need to pass on this property. Even the developer knew that our current zoning didn't permit what the changes sitting before you. The developer needed the changes and our city staff came through for them. Don't blame me. Don't make any changes. Leave the current plan as it is. See how quickly Copper Leaf leaves. There's already an interstate. If you want to see what this is going to turn into, there's a place called Bloomington. It's in California. It's an unincorporated area of San Bernardino County. They went through what we are going to be going through if this goes through. Do your research, look them up, and see what happened to that community. See what happened to those families. See what happened to those kids. It is going to affect everybody. Thank you.
Uh, hi. I'm over at Terry Oles, 406 Parksville Avenue. You're thinking, yes, it's another kid. But, um, yes, I'm, I'm a high school freshman. Getting a fit, anyway. But I must state the fact that as a platform that suggests that the lands, the home, and the businesses that are so important to this community, we shouldn't sell out to big names in the first place. I'm personally for the right incorporation of, of certain businesses that would help our community. But taking away from the small business factor that we currently have would just be a disgrace to what DuPont is. We're, we're a small town with big history. I, I gotta say that if, if we believe that we as the citizens of DuPont want to go through this, I say that we really shouldn't. And personally, it affects everyone because the fact is that we have a middle school. We have plenty of small businesses that support the economy very well. We have pretty much anything you could want. We already have two Starbucks's, which is enough. As is, personally. Um, we, well, maybe not, but maybe three. Uh, but as is, we, we should be able to sustain ourselves as what we have, adding some small businesses and small offices and small corporations to what we have as a city and as a, just as a community. We do events, we have, we have a beautiful thing, we have a beautiful floral community that stands by its people. And I hope that in your decision for warehousing and, uh, the gas station that should be going, that you said should be going up, I personally hope it doesn't. But think about what it would affect, how it would affect the entire community as a whole.
Jubal Drappur, 309 Tasty's Avenue. I'm at his age, where is he? I'm at your age, okay? Good evening, uh, council members and Mr. Mayor. I am standing... I am standing up today for no warehouse. And a couple of things. I open a Facebook, two things I see for DuPont, roof cleaning, gutter cleaning, siding cleaning, and no warehouses. I think everybody's right. And we have to think about it as elected officials. Why are so many citizens of DuPont is spending so much time on this issue? Because safety and security of the families with good quality of life and especially our children's well-being is a priority. Imagine if I ask you a question, suppose you are not a council member, you were, some of you were, just got elected, right? And if you're standing here, right here, and if you were to speak, yes to warehouse or don't do warehouse, what would you say? I'll be silent here for a few seconds. Answer to your own heart and say that, yes, I want to see the warehouses just at the golf course. Very nice. I haven't seen one. Who would be the first one to see the warehouses on the golf course? Also, I would like to say that, as you all know, that majority of the citizens of DuPont are either active or retired military. We all have our retirement money invested here in DuPont, as much as more than current buyer, to be honest. Think about it for a second. This buyer will develop this property for possibly twenty-five million dollars, and he will sell one million dollar per acre for six hundred and sixty-five acres, which is six hundred and sixty-five million dollars. Can he not discount that? Can he not take it down to two hundred and fifty million dollar profits? You guys need to do some math, and they also need to do some math, and I'm sure you can work it out. We would like to see our hard-earned money to be protected and grow, and warehouses will not support this formula. So I don't understand one thing, why are we in so much of hurry with the first buyer right here and let this, I would, if I were you, I would let this buyer pass by. I'm sure city will find another buyer who will work with the citizens and consider humanity with moderate profits versus, versus the thousand-fold profits. I am happy with the homes, commercials, corporate buildings, but big no for the warehouse. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Hello, my name is Alyssa Munio, 1629 East Donald Avenue. I am the mother of two children, spouse of an active military soldier and a resident of the city of DuPont. There is very unique quality about this town that I fear to be in danger, an exceptional sense of community, which I believe must be valued and protected. I call upon our mayor and council members to truly consider what is at stake here, the safety of our children foremost. My son crosses Center Drive twice a day, going to and from school. In my district, it's a newfound independence. If semi-trucks are permitted to travel down this road, I will feel it's no longer safe to allow him to cross the street alone. Should my daughter and I discontinue the use of the walking chair as a long Center Drive? The mere idea of exposing her to an infinitely more dangerous kind of traffic is daunting, let alone the overwhelming amount of unhealthy exhaust emitted by these vehicles. Our backyard, where my children play daily, is aligned with Center Drive. If semi-trucks are allowed to plow down the street within the confines of my own yard, I could no longer be confident in their well-being. This alone is a huge factor in my staying towards ex zoning our city. I'm against placing a major truck route through a residential area and a Jalen Farm middle school. The heightened traffic will put our children in harm's way, pollute our air, and damage our roads, further impacting our citizens. Secondly, Old Fort Lake is zoned as commercial, not industrial. Freestanding warehouses and distribution centers are not currently allowed. I do not support this being changed. I cannot and will not be persuaded to agree with allowing more noise, more light pollution, less environmental merit, and more traffic congestion. These things would have an enormously negative impact on our residents' quality of life and would subtract greatly from the attributes that draw people to our town. Our elevated standards are what separate from the rest, us from the rest. Lower them and we will be left with mediocrity. Please take the time to thoroughly review any proposed changes to our city zoning and to push for refined definitions within any zoning laws. If passed, I oblige you to not allow prohibitions on warehousing or the noise level classification to be changed for the business type of park. Without your intention to detail and resolve, what is now an extraordinary town will fail to be. Also, let's not forget we already have an industrial area and that your constituents have entrusted you to keep our residential and industrial zones separate. Those against landing the two are not just the vocal minority. I would argue that we are the minoritized majority. The voices you hear represent more than just our own. While not every single resident has or takes the opportunity to speak up, I can say I surely speak for myself, my family, and a vast number of friends and acquaintances who are either not fortunate enough to have the time or emboldened enough with confidence to take a stand. I, and we, however, am. I compel you to vote for your citizens, for the people who call this town a home, for our land and air and our sense of community, for our children and family, for our safety and quality of life.
Thank you.
Vote for the residents that you represent, not business and not industry. Please vote for us.
Monica Shell Parker, 207 Breheone Avenue. Um, my family moved here five and a half years ago. Um, of course, we were also a military family. After a few years of moving around, we landed here and my son said, Mom, can we please not move again until I'm married? He was nine at the time. He was tired of moving. We had come from Oregon and, um, going into the military was a big change for us. So the family was quite excited that we were coming back to the Northwest, and DuPont has been a nice buffer of distance, if you know what I mean, for that drive home. We love it here. I was amazed when I finally got out and started getting around town and saw all the trails. And now my son is fourteen and in high school, and he has the freedom to go anywhere he wants in town. In a large town, even in Yale, I would not be letting him do that. There's too much traffic out there, there's a lot more crime. If you try and go, you know, through P. Wallop, it's ridiculous. Our biggest hindrance here is traffic, our truck traffic. I have repeatedly had semi-trucks pull out in front of me. I see them run the red lights all the time at Sparksdale and DuPont Silicon Road. I would love to see DuPont stay small. I would love to see DuPont be that Northwest town that people are, you know, out running, kayaking, biking, enjoying the Northwest forest that we still have here that has not been ruined yet. So please, I encourage you not to allow for warehousing. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Simone Amady, 4083 Brown Loop. The more I think about the proposed changes to our current zoning codes for Old Fort Lake, protecting our beautiful city from monster warehouses, the more upset I become. Why would anyone in a position of authority want to accommodate an out-of-town worker who has only the all-night dollar as motivation? Why would any council member want to help facilitate these drastic changes to the most beautiful part of DuPont? I don't understand. Since attending council meetings, I have not heard any DuPont neighbors or citizens or friends supporting this. It makes me wonder. Only the developer and city planners seem to be in favor of this project. Why would any council member want to sign their name to these drastic and lasting zoning code changes to Old Fort Lake? There is no benefit whatsoever for the citizens of DuPont. Those that elected council members in good faith so that the citizens of DuPont will be represented. The changes for DuPont will be of a negative sort. Ugly warehouses, drastically increased truck traffic, noise, air, and light pollution, unsafe conditions near our school, zone and increased traffic in our neighborhoods. All of these things concern me greatly, especially when I see what direction our city has taken, particularly in the last year. The indoor storage, Ace Hardware, and the heart of our town, and proposed Giant Arco Station are already adding to the downward spiral of our city. I urge council members to keep our current zoning protections in place and vote no. Thank you for your time.
Okay, next item on the, one last one please. Thank you. Just a minute. Gus Lee, 1280, um, DuPont. Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Staff, good evening. Good news, bad news? The bad news is that you're really facing complex issues. They've sparked a great deal of negative emotion, more directly to fear. And it's ironic, when we first visited DuPont, when both of our sons and our daughter-in-law were active duty and deployed, and we hadn't idea we might be coming here to join them. We described to each other DuPont as the town in which the Truman Show had been shot. It was Disneyland, USA, except it wasn't an amusement park. It was a genuine community. I grew up in inner-cityhood, the, just like everyone else here, a Chinese immigrant kid in all-black inner-cityhood. It was a dangerous, fussy environment. There was a lot of fear, a lot of crime. And five, six years ago, if someone told me that I would come to a, a city council meeting in DuPont because there are hot issues in which hostile emotions were being exchanged, I would, I'm not a betting person, I would bet against it. So that's the bad news. The good news is that you, as our city government, own the levers to reduce the fear, develop trust, and use this platform, the gas station, the issue of warehouses and distribution centers, and heavy semi-truck trailer traffic, as a baton that you can carry. We've been looking at you pretty seriously. You've gotten some hot tweets. I again apologize to city staff for my harsh words. I really regret inserting a lack of civility into my communication earlier in these chambers. I again apologize. I'm excited about the good news because you're really competent and you're really dedicated. You're very smart, you're very experienced, and you know the issues. And if you don't, and this is a very complex field, I speak as a recovering lawyer, you will become competent. Thank you for taking your time with this. Thank you for taking care of the city. God bless.
Jasper, 1525 Jensen Avenue. I won't take up much of your time. I see you're all in a hurry. People, raise your hand if you're for more warehouses. I don't see any. Raise your hand if you're for this big gas station. City Council, raise your hand if you're for more gas stations and more trucks and more warehouses. I don't see any hands. Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. Before we take this, I just wanted to make